Are we ready, Kim?
Yes.
It's about four minutes after 6:00 P.M., we will begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the previous session? I entertain the motion to approve. Have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Okay, that is a preliminary motion, a second. Any further discussion, corrections, or changes? All those in favor of approving? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right, the report from the Board of Commissioners. Mayor Bridge.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kim. We had a long but very productive meeting at our regular commission meeting on August the 19th. Items of interest for the Planning Commission. Mayor's report, Commissioner Martin. Martin followed up on a request from Commissioner Jenkins about the streetlights and turned over to Mr. Jason Jones, who stated that Sevier County Electric was aware that some of the streetlights were not working, and those were tagged with a red ring and designated for repair. And Mr. Jones also reported that the highway before the school zone lights had been painted with school zone for more visibility. And I'll just add that they have been working on the markings for the streets up and down 321, and really, looks really good in terms of refreshing some of those crosswalk markings and things like that. So very, very much appreciated on that. Building Co.'s report, the building inspector reported that he had issued eight certificates of occupancy and had 24 open building permits. He's been saying that he's been working on the driveway permit and a single-family dwelling use form with the Planning Commission, which we got discussed. Let's see, Mr. Butler stated that the single-family dwelling use form was required for contractors who pulled a building permit to have a form notarized that their structure is following the state fire marshal's office. Mr. Ogulay reported that he picked up a few signs on the right of way and had written a few letters for overgrown yards, and that the food vendors at the balloon festival had all their permits. We had a recreation report from Vice Mayor Satterfield, reported that a draft of the Parks and Rec master plan had been completed by SE Group, and that has been reviewed by the community plan advisory committee. You'll recall that as part of that contract, we had asked for a Parks and Rec master plan that will be appended to the community plan, certain things being integrated into it. And that will allow us to apply for certain grants and things that we're not currently able to apply for. Then, under new business, a great interest to this Planning Commission. We had a discussion on nominations for the Planning Commission and VZA vacancies. And as such, I'd like to welcome Christina Delaney, new member of the Planning Commission. I've appointed her based on recommendation from the Board of Commissioners. So welcome, Christina. We're pleased to have you join the Planning Commission. Also, Board of Commissioners voted to appoint Michael Lindsey to the VZA. And then Parks and Rec Board of Vacancies were also discussed. And Penny McIntosh and Donna Conover were voted to join the Parks and Rec Committee. We had a discussion on the Special People's Park proposal. You know, this is one of our larger projects, one that has great interest by our residents and visitors alike. You all are, I think, well-versed, but here's what has happened on that. Representatives from the CEC group, if you'll remember there, the group that was selected through the ARQ process, presented their project plan and were there to answer questions. The Board of Commissioners looked at several aspects of the project plan. We removed an optional survey services and eventually appropriated $17,000, a big chunk of our Parks and Rec budget for this coming year, to propose work by CEC. And so that work will entail some original, or initial surveys to identify all the corners of the property and to get all the topography. And also, it will include some different project proposals. So it's just sort of an initial sketch on what the Special People's Park could look like. So that is a significant investment being made from our city budget of $17,000 to support that infrastructure improvement. And so I just wanted to highlight again that that is coming from our city budget to support that work for the Special People's Park. Then we had a discussion on the recommendation from the Planning Commission and ordinance amendment in Chapter 6 of the zoning ordinance to add residence as a permitted use in the B1. And you all will recall that in that motion passed on first reading. Let's see, what else I got to share? Board of Commissioners also discussed an easement agreement between the City of Townsend and Takalishi Utility District to allow the TUD to access their water tank via the Genie Moser Memorial Park. And we had quite some discussion about that easement that was proposed. And eventually, we took a motion to postpone that item to our September meeting in order to allow some time to get a map. So there was a map attached to that, apparently as Exhibit A, we didn't have the map. And then there was some discussion about making sure that that map had additional, or existing water lines and things that might be in that vicinity where the new road will go in, make sure it's marked on there. And so we'll take another run at that in September. Also, there was some discussion about changing it from a permanent easement to a five-year agreement. So we'll have to take that up at our next Board of Commissioners meeting. So we did not ultimately take action on that, but it was postponed to our September meeting. And then finally, well, actually, let me back up one. We had discussion on a new ordinance leveraging the privilege tax upon the occupancy of hotels or motels within the City of Townsend. And so this motion was ultimately approved on first reading, and it would include levying a 3% occupancy tax for the purpose of being able to collect additional revenues that could support tourism. Now, tourism doesn't necessarily have to be limited to visitors. So any infrastructure project, like the one I just mentioned at the Special People's Park, could actually be supported, what we've understood from the state, could be supported by these revenues. And so while we took a motion and approved $17,000 of the city budget of our precious resources, if this passes, this would allow another revenue stream that could be devoted to infrastructure projects like that. And so I just want to highlight that for you all. Okay, and then finally, under other business, I wanted to just mention this because I know some of you all might be aware. Chief Stallions reported that a longtime Townsend area volunteer fighter, Stan Cotton, had passed away via memorial service on September the 20th at the Fire Hall. And so we made a motion, I made a motion to recognize Mr. Cotton's service on behalf of the city. It was segued by Commissioner Martin and passed unanimously. So we will recognize Stan Cotton for his service to the Townsend area volunteer fighter. And that's, I'm happy to answer any questions.
What was the date of that service?
September the 20th.
Is there a time?
I don't see a time here, but I'm sure one has been established. You may just reach out to Chief Stallions.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions for the Mayor regarding the report from Board of Commissioners?
Are they limiting on the tax, the 3%, right? Where can that be spent?
So it can be spent on infrastructure projects. It could be spent on things like the Special People's Park, or it could be spent on the bike trail. It can be spent to support our community organizations like the Heritage Center or the Little River Railroad and lumber company museum.
That's pretty much where it will be spent?
Those will be the items, I think, that come to mind first. If there was some other project, you know, the bike trail is something that I know our residents enjoy, and our visitors enjoy that as well. So if we wanted to enhance the bike trail, perhaps by putting a message board at the lower end with the upper end, or a dog watering station, a place you could fill your water bottle, something like that could be used to enhance the bike trail. But that would be actually by our visitors as well.
Do you think it would ever be used to attract tourism into the city? Or is it just going to be used to support tourism in the city?
Yeah, it's a good question. And I think what this will allow us to do as a city, keep in mind that, you know, we are the only entity that will really be looking out and taking into consideration those projects that might have synergy. So, for example, you know, there are other tourism outfits operated by the county that have to take into account what's best for the county. But this would be a way for us in the City of Townsend to be able to look for those things that are a synergy and not necessarily just something that's looking to increase the top line. But to answer your question directly, they do have to be spent on things that potentially, you know, could be considered tourism.
Right, so it could be used to attract tourism? Like, would we give money to block partnership to attract business? Is that something that could be spent on?
Well, block partnership gets there, and I think it's smoking on Tourism Development Authority officially, that gets part of the occupancy tax now. So right now, in the county, I understand it leverages 5% occupancy tax, and the vast majority goes to the partnership. And the main tourism thing that the partnership has been investing in is the visitor center. And so this will be different. We still have to have an accounting for it. It would be under more local control and local input that would allow us to find those projects that would have, you know, great centers.
So it's to support tourism, basically. But we can use it just to support tourism in Townsend. We don't have to use it to attract tourism, correct?
It has to be for tourism, but we might make the scope and make those decisions about what are the actual things that we spend on.
Right, I mean, we don't make that scope. The restrictions are within that 3%. We don't put the restrictions on that money. The restrictions are given to us.
Right, they're pretty broad, as we understand. They're given in the Tennessee Code, annotated, and so, but we would have the flexibility to direct that locally. And we would be, you know, we're the entity that takes into account the needs and desires of our citizens and what kind of activities like that would be congruent. And so I would imagine, instead of allocating $17,000 from the city budget, that we could be using for computers or something else, we could be using these types of funds to support this work at the Special People's Park.
And swinging bridges, well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Any questions for him?
As you know, I like to read stuff, and I'd like to know what Tennessee Code-annotated number this is covered by, so I can read it. Do you know the number?
Not off the top of my head, but there is a code because we encountered it not that long ago on another matter, so, but I just don't know the citation, Commissioner Jenkins, but I'll make sure to get it to you.
Please do.
Any other questions for the Mayor? All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay, now is the time for public input. We have some folks that have signed up here on board, but I think these are probably to address agenda items, which we will address, and we'll have time to speak at that time.
Stan's service is at 1:00 P.M. on the 20th.
Okay, for Stan, 1:00 P.M. on September the 20th for the memorial service or the recognition. All right, we have Mr. Best, Gary Best, Treehouse Restaurant. You just addressed this agenda item. Okay. And then, of course, Robbie Nutting, Robbie as well?
Yes.
And it looks like no one else has signed up to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board during the public comment time? All right, now, let's move on then. New business, new business. Item number one, site plan review for Townsend Treehouse Restaurant project in Trillion Cove. And if someone would like to come up and just introduce, introduce the subject to us, just give us a broad overview of a project and what you request and the location. And then we'll give you the price.
Stand, right?
Yes, sir. If we could, Mr. Kim, I'm sorry to interrupt. I meant to raise this earlier, I should have raised it earlier so we could amend our agenda. I'd like to propose an item under other business to address the editable copy of our zoning report. You got it?
I'll make a note of that down here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Just a point of clarification, the Mayor asked prior to the meeting the agenda item be added in under other business, which would be an editable copy of the Digital Planning Regulation. And so I did add that at the end of the agenda. This is Mr. Robbie Nutting. If you'll just give us an overview of the project, please?
Yes, sir. My wife and I moved here a few years ago, and I love the town since since 2008. We've run a restaurant for almost 40 years in a place called Crawfordville, Florida. That restaurant still is going. We sold it a year and a half ago. And we decided to move here, try to open a restaurant here. And we've looked at about seven or eight locations that were existing restaurants, but most cases, after talking to Bill Wilson and Port County Environmental, a lot of them had pretty severe subject tank issues and everything. So that led me to stumble across this Trillion Cove, which was supposed to have a restaurant built years ago. It's already was approved by board from way back. They have their own water treatment center, which was appealing to me, and parking and power and all that such is already there. So I like the location. If our design was to get approved, it would afford, it would be a two-story place with the kitchen being downstairs, a powerhouse kitchen that I designed. And then, well, if that's approved. And the top floor would be dining, that's high enough to where you can build a seat with the adjacent gift shops. I don't know if you all are familiar with Trillion Cove. It's a little collection of cottages where it makes it ace. And so I am, our plan is to put the second floor high enough where you can dine up there and still take in most of the mountains all the way around right there and have a nice view of the mountain outline of Townsend that we all love so much. That's pretty much the gist of it.
All right.
Do you have any questions for me specifically about the restaurant? Not so much with setbacks and everything. Yes, this one is, yeah.
All right. Yeah, a little bit, too, a little bit. I'd like to ask Kim, you reached out to Kim, and he received the plans, and you've been reviewing them with Kim. We've asked for a couple of clarifications and things like that. Kim, if you could go ahead and address the council as to this plan and the process that you've already been going through?
Yes, they submitted the drawings some days before our agenda review. So we went through a whole bunch of items on it. And we had a call view as we were reviewing them. And we suggested that we bring in some more things to make sure that rather than protract it for another month, that we can address them here. So this letter is a response to all the issues that we addressed with them going down the checklist. And they have then provided every, all responses in red. And one of the specifics they have also done in terms of providing some amendments or due diligence is they also provided a letter from the wastewater provider. And they had mentioned that if for any reason their equipment would increase, they have an adjacent lot to which they can address all those. But currently, they're only considering that as an option. They've also provided us with an email from the county saying that everything that is due from the county is not needed, but this letter is what amounts to what. It demonstrates what the capacity is, and that it can be met. So basically, given all that they have provided, they have met everything that we have asked for prior to review. And therefore, it's, I leave it up to you all to discuss everything, ask them what they, what you want clarification on, and then decide what you'd like to proceed with in terms of decision. But we have done an extensive review, and I think they've met it very, very satisfactorily.
All right, thank you, Kim. Yes, I was present with Kim when we had a phone call with Doug, and he identified several items at that time that looked like they've been addressed here in red. I haven't had a chance to verify those yet, so we'll probably need to go through those. And then we'll ask other Commissioners as well if there's questions regarding the site plan that they'd like for clarification as well. I know at the beginning, we had asked for an overall master plan of the PNV just to verify the setbacks in the exterior property lines and the parking areas. And it looks like those have been provided as well. Interesting. So this PNV was actually approved, looks like, back in 2004. So that was prior to me being involved or anyone else on this board. So it's really nice to have these reviewed and be able to look at and verify them. It's okay with the council. Let's just start with this, the response letter that is marked in red and black for the items that Kim identified earlier?
Hi, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I spent four hours today going through the drawings, so I need to make it. And then at the beginning of this meeting, we get another packet full of information. I feel cheap that I didn't get a chance to review this packet rather than spending four hours on what was submitted earlier.
I agree. I, too, spent, you know, doing my homework and doing my due diligence, and there was so much missing. So they threw a very incomplete package at us 10 days prior, and then we sit down. I don't think we have enough time to review this. It was supposed to be 10 days prior. What was given to us 10 days prior is not enough to make a decision on. So all this was done behind the code, without the Commissioners' input. We should have had this 10 days ago, not when we sit down.
Well, the requirement, the request is that they submit their plan 10 days prior to the meeting, which did.
Which was, which was not this.
Which they did submit the site plan. And then when the camera on hand with Doug, as well as all of you had access to it as well, it was open and public right at the time.
I wasn't invited to that.
I wasn't invited.
But you know the plans are submitted 10 days prior for your inspection. You know that the agenda is set, and this is an agenda.
I came in to review this. This is what I was given. This I got.
When was that?
And I'm saying that's exactly the same thing that happened with me and Kim and Doug. And as part of the review process is to come in and look at the preliminary submission for deficiencies. And upon aligning some, we contacted the applicant for clarification. And he's provided that clarification.
The day of.
Yes, and it's here for us to look at. So you're someone that you don't wish to review it?
I'm someone that should have had an opportunity to review this before, 10 minutes before the meeting. I don't think it's right that I wasn't given this.
And Jim, David told us, I was told, you were told, all of us were told, that the plans were in there.
These plans.
The, the, I'm not sure any plan was going to be very else submitted.
With all of these deficiencies?
No.
Yes.
That was presented, yes.
Yes.
Well, Mike, myself, Doug, King, everybody else went over and penciled in what we thought were deficiencies and things on, and asked that they could be clarified.
All of that done outside of this meeting?
We, we provided that information.
It was done outside of this meeting?
We provided that information to your printer before his meeting.
This was to be submitted 10 days prior, so we had time to review it.
It was submitted.
They submitted it with all of these deficiencies.
So it's, so one thing, just, let's short-circuit a couple of things. One of the things, a lot of the comments isn't a, and I understand that. And so a big bit of the questions that are on there, probably half or better, are all about the original fund that was submitted and approved several years ago. We did nothing to change any of that.
I'm not saying we did.
Because that information already existed and should have been in the city's records from back then. So a lot of the comments that we made today was just to go, look, here's the plan that you all approved many years ago.
Oh, and I have that, right?
Yeah.
Here, right here. I've been through it.
Right, so a bunch of the questions were just clarification on that. Because when they got to review it, they didn't have the fund in front of them. But that wasn't typically a submittable.
They have this, they have access to the same documents I have.
Okay. I don't have access to that.
Well, it's public.
Okay, you know, so.
Let's, okay, let's, we're looking way off track here, here guys. Listen, here's the process. We require plans to be submitted 10 days prior.
And this was, these were the plans submitted 10 days prior?
Yes, as I was just saying, the plans are required to be submitted 10 days prior, which they did submit the plans for their site plan review. Now, it's up to us as Commissioners to come in and review those plans before the meeting.
And I'm prepared to do that.
Thank you for, please stop interjecting. And it's our duty to come in here and review the plans if we see deficiencies. We have an obligation to refer back to the applicant, to give them the chance to clarify prior to the meeting when we're actually going to take action, which is exactly what they had done. And he's correct, I'm sorry, Mr. Best is correct in that a lot of the questions that we had pertain to the PNV master plan as far as exterior setbacks, parking spaces, things of that area. And we requested that they submit that, which they have. Now, I don't think that this body should have any problem whatsoever to look at the clarifications that we had requested, which they had submitted, so this plan can be reviewed, so it might be acted upon. Now, we may come across other questions during this process that will need further clarification, but this is part of the normal process. This is how we do business here.
Why, what is the reason to submit 10 days prior and then switch it when we sit down? What is the reason for that?
There is a switch, there's a clarification, there's additional information which we requested from us.
We need to determine that, and why was I, I thought it wrong?
You can come in at any time to review on your own.
I did.
You can request information on your own. If you choose not to do so, that's fine. I had questions, therefore I ask them.
Would you ask them to?
I ask them to the individuals, the applicants, who submitted the information. If it's not complete or I have questions, it is my duty to request that of them so I can review it, so we can take action on this.
Right, we can go forward, but I'm going to question absolutely everything, and you will have to show me, because I did not have time to review this.
That is what we're doing, and that's what I explained.
How can other people have access to this and me not?
No one had access to that until we just sat down. Kim gave that to us all at the same exact time as he received it.
But I don't understand the reason we're giving, we're giving it in some way that it's either ways, just to get it on the agenda. I don't understand this.
And let me explain what happens as part of standard municipal planning practice. Somebody's supposed to submit something. They can choose to submit it just after deadline, or they can submit it well before the deadline.
What is the deadline?
10 days before.
Thank you.
There you go, and they did that.
Incomplete.
No, they didn't, the issue is not that it's incomplete. The issue is that they submitted something, full stop. Now, at the same time, we had a regular scheduled agenda review meeting. Every single municipality we work with has an agenda review meeting. We do it with capping break, we do it with time to do with everyone. Now, if we do the review and we see things that need clarification, we will immediately tell them what needs clarification. And that also helps with expediting the process, because he's a businessman with business decisions and whatever else to wait. So if that expedits the process for the decision-making, then we ask them, immediately ask and determine it for them to bring it in, so that if there's... so that if there's any questions, that will be revealed in terms of what you might want to know. We will alert them that you might as well bring them to this meeting instead of protracting it for another one simply because you didn't know that certain things on the checklist were missed. It's simply that. But an agenda review meeting is a standard process to review items before they come to the planning commission. And it's that same agenda review item that determines what gets put on the agenda. So they met the deadline. We reviewed it. We thought there were some things we would like to have some clarification on in advance of the meeting, and they dutifully did that, full stop.
Who is on the agenda review committee and when does this committee meet?
We meet.
Because it should meet ten days prior.
It doesn't happen.
We get this ten days prior.
It doesn't happen. We're getting that again here. The agenda review committee is our higher planner, the chairman of the planning commission, and our co-signs, our building inspector.
It's just irritating that I spent all this time reviewing and seeing things that are missing on incomplete plans that were submitted. Why aren't they even submitted ten days prior if they're incomplete? Why did I waste half a day going through incomplete plans?
Chairman, yes, Mayor, please. The plan is submitted ten days in advance. If I had a question, you all had a bunch of questions on the PUD. I didn't have any questions on the PUD. But if I did, I could have asked for a clarification. And when we show them to go through, if any commissioner has identified a potential deficiency, we're going to go through it right now. So I think that's.
I just, I don't think, I just don't think things should be thrown in front of us when we sit down. Whether it be this, whether it be in accordance, whether it be anything. It should not be put in front of us when we sit down. It's not.
It's our job to facilitate the review of these site plans, and we should expedite these. And we shouldn't, just because no site plan I've ever seen has come in and been 100% perfect before the meeting. It's, you cannot.
Even though the.
And any one of those site plans would be rejected by your criteria. No, our job here is to identify which we have, and we ask the questions, which I'm sure you have a list of questions as well that you want to go through. And this is an opportunity for the clarification. I mean, it's not that complicated.
My issue is, I review, I spent hours reviewing.
I spent hours too. That's our duty, it's our job.
Why did we accept incomplete ten days prior?
Had to know it's incomplete before you reviewed it for hours. This is a crazy, okay, but I stick to the, to the, we're going to take action.
I do have a question. When is this agenda review meeting? Is it on a fixed schedule? Or do you guys just call it, and we don't have any idea?
It's the Thursday before the agenda is due to be set. Isn't that correct?
Well, it's basically, that general meeting happens the Thursday prior to the Thursday's site review.
Yeah, so, so a week ago Thursday. So it's going to be held every single week. On Thursday, the week prior. And that's done at practice across the board. Every season, any strategy is spread there.
My only thought is, maybe if there's some communication that if not everybody should be on that meeting, maybe communication as to what was said on that meeting. So if there's things that have been determined that are lacking, and people have to go over there a second time, and they would already have a running list, it just seems like maybe some communication would be helpful.
And let me make one of, one of conflagration to that aside. Typically, it is the plan staff that does the agenda review, not the planning commission. The planning commission comes to the meeting with what is presented to them. So most of them don't get the full content of your agenda. They get your agenda, know what's going to be discussed. But the full contents of what will be discussed, they all get it at the meeting. And the agenda review meeting is done by the staff. So for example, Gartner, I meet with the planner, the assistant planner, the fire chief, the engineer, the sewer engineer for water, the engineer for wastewater, plus the solid waste department. So there they have a comprehensive agenda review meeting. None of the commissioners are there, it's the staff. So it's basically a staff agenda review meeting, basically.
And our job as commissioners is to review this and make your own list of considerations that you'd like to ask. Now, I'd say a lot of those are probably going to be exactly the same as what we came up with. So we'll just, we'll go through the checklist. Since there may be more, I'll get out the site plan review checklist, and we start with number one, the north point, and we go through the whole thing.
Also, you need to refer back to what the PUD, because there's things in PUD that's not on the site plan list.
Okay. What is, I'm going to pass it on to me. Everybody is in the path, it's a company, it's city code to notice, it's covered upon them to provide, because it's already in city records. And it's already in approved planning and development that is established within the city.
Yes, and it has its own weeks and bounds, and it is past its muster, as far as the PUD.
No, for instance, in the PUD, no freestanding building shall be closer than 20 feet to any other freestanding building, and no closer than 25 feet to the exterior parking lot. That is in the PUD, and that is not on our checklist. So you need to look at the PUD, and you need to look at the checklist.
That is, that is in here as well. But as, well, we get to, let's just start with number one so we don't miss anything, because it's not started jumping from place to place. We'll just try to stay on track here. Number one, North Point Scale. True, and that's that. Number two, location map, surrounding land use and streets. Do you agree the location map is there on the grading plan?
No, surrounding land use and streets. Surrounding land use, we've got all sorts of cabins. Are they listed on here? Oh, look, they are. So are the surrounding land use, are these the cabins? Are these the cabins that are here now? Are these the cabins that are kind of miniature? What are they? It says surrounding.
On the front page, on the front page here of the grading and site plan.
Right.
You look up at the top. It has site information and a location map showing the Trillium Cove in context of probably of Atma Radius.
So is this talk, the surrounding land use and streets location map, is this location map of Trillium Cove? Or is it location map?
It says location map on the front page of the site plan has satisfactory for me. Does anyone else have a problem with the location map provided?
Okay, go forward. Because I thought it was the location map of their business we're talking about, their business, not about Trillium, not about a PUD.
Yes, taking the last pages, I'm asking planning of the PUD.
Oh, I have not had the ability to look at.
I'm looking at it right here, right.
I do, it was just put in front of my face. I have not had a chance.
We'll turn the pages, and you will observe the information.
Tell me where.
The very last page shows the master plan of the PUD in context to the overall location map which shows in a manner of view of probably Atma Radius. So we know where it is.
We know where it is, but surrounding land use and streets, is this their business, or is it the PUD?
Do you see the location map, do you see the streets? They're drawn on the location map.
My question is, are we talking about the PUD or are we talking about their business? Just answer that question.
So what would you like to see in reference to the location?
As to what we are talking about.
We're not talking about the PUD. We're talking about its business, but its business is within the PUD.
Thank you.
The PUD is very established, there's nothing we can do about.
Thank you.
Whether you like it or don't like it.
That is what I'm saying. So I'm asking, is the location land use and streets, is it the PUD or is it their business?
No, they have brought two sites within the PUD. And your business is going to be on one of these sites within the PUD, within the city.
So the location map you were saying refers to Trillium Cove. It does not refer to their business. Not the PUD.
Refer to Trillium Cove as a PUD.
I'm sorry, um, all right.
Well, that's a simple question. It's a simple question.
It's a simple question. Is the parcel within Trillium Cove? Yes, it is.
No, if we're talking about.
Yes, it is in the PUD.
I'm talking about the location map. If that is referring to their business, then we need the surrounding land use and streets. Surrounding land use would be ABR, stained glass cottage, garden, you know, the garden place. That would be surrounding land use and streets. If we're talking about the PUD, you could use this map. I want clarification. Are we talking about their business or are we talking about the PUD? Simple question.
A location map of the site that is going to be developed.
Of the PUD.
No, the requirement on the site plan review checklist is a location map for the site that is being entertained for development, which is the restaurant itself within the PUD.
If you're talking about the location map, is there a restaurant? Show me where it shows ABR, the coffee shop, this down. If you say it is the PUD, you have checked that box.
And the original PUD, the two lots that were put in this restaurant on, in the original PUD, were designated as a restaurant.
I know that.
So there's no discussion on whether we could put a restaurant there or not.
No.
Your board already approved that.
How have we, we haven't even been through this. How have we approved it?
In the original master plan, when you approved the PUD, all of that stuff was approved at that point.
Right, I'm just trying to define.
This is not a discussion now whether I can put a restaurant there.
No.
You already approved that.
I did not question that.
Okay. But those additional land uses around it
Right.
were determined at that point in time. This is not a discussion of whether I can put a restaurant there.
No.
You can't stop that.
No.
Because you've already approved that.
Exactly.
Today, we're here to be kind and say, "Look, what we're going to put on that box is this picture." That's it, that's all we're saying.
So my, I feel that my question was very simple. Does this location map refer to the PUD or does it refer to your business? Because if it refers to the PUD, your map right here is fine, you got it covered. If it refers to your business, then the surrounding land use and streets, then I don't see the other cabins.
May I provide some clarification? To answer your question directly. If this was not a PUD, and it was a freestanding property, let's say on 321, you would be, it would be incumbent upon them to provide who their neighbors are. So let's say on the north side is this, the west side is this, across the street is that. Now, this is not a freestanding property, it's a PUD, okay?
Right.
So to your question, the location map is referring to the PUD.
That's all I needed.
Not to the exterior of the PUD.
Thank you.
All right. But then you also have descriptions of the master plan of the PUD, wherein you can't find the exact parcel that's being referenced. I mean, there's.
Haven't had time to review that.
I looked at it in 10 seconds and saw it. All right.
Read it.
Location map. Total acreage of the tract.
Where is that?
If I read this, there are two tracts being used for this building.
No, there's just one.
It says, it says C. Mike, it says CU19, and it says CU20. Those are two separate parcels that are being joined to build this building.
Correct.
Have they been legally joined? Or is this building straddling a property line?
Did you put the builder Gary on both lots?
Yes.
It is on both lots. We've not been, let's put it this way, we've not been before this board to remove this center property line. I've sat on your side, I understand. So it's not like you're sitting here talking to somebody that doesn't know what's going on. So that property line, I will tell you, has not been removed. Okay?
Your plan is to remove it?
Do what?
Your plan is to remove it?
Absolutely.
And make it.
And when they, when they did the PUD, there was a whole block was, could be two, could be, they can know.
I don't think there's a space between.
No, there's not, they're slacked together.
There's none, there's zero.
And so it would have been a duplex if you were looking at another development, if they ended up being two different shops.
Are we going to require that?
Yes, for review of the lot line, we require.
Just, there's one clarification. This was a zero lot line development, right? So the building can only be on that lot. They will only own the property under the building. That's a question for you.
That's my understanding.
Oh, PUD, and that point is, you only own the footprint. Outside, well, not inside, outside the PUD, from the edge of the footprint.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, total acreage. Show me where that is.
I think it's on that first sheet. I found it, it was either on this one or the Big Set Plans.
The Big Set Plans was two separate lots.
Anywhere.
It was .03 and .03. We don't, to my knowledge, we do not have a total acreage term.
And that's omitted from this, about 10 minutes ago.
But if they.
Okay, you're saying the lot line out there, but it's a moving point.
So we may have to come back for that.
Okay, so that's the other one.
Put that on something that's checked over for next time.
Total acreage of tract.
All right, setbacks, dimensions, and bearings of lot lines.
So in a PUD, you don't have setbacks, because the building footprint is the footprint. So there's not a setback, there's not a property line like you have on a normal subdivision or property out here. In a PUD, everything is already predetermined where it goes.
You have anything else to come here?
And in this particular one, if you look at what's around the perimeter, I'll worry us. So if they impose a setback, you're not going to get that.
Yeah, the setbacks and dimensions, lot line bearings were all delineated when the PUD was originally established and approved.
Correct.
So you do have acreage, but it's for two separate lots, so we have to add that combined. So you do have acreage, but it's two separate lots, so we have to add that combined. Okay. Okay, location of existing and proposed structures. On this parcel, there are no existing structures, but there is...
One thing I did, it kind of helped, I took the old site plan and I kind of gave you a little bit more area, and I showed the adjacent buildings. And I also showed the distance to each one of the buildings that would be within that twenty, twenty-five foot area. The building does, is over twenty feet for any of the adjacent buildings.
Where is that on the map?
On the reverse sheet.
I don't see it. I see one building.
And they're labeled existing buildings.
I see like the artist cabin, and I see possibly like Dogwood. I don't see ABR, which is your north neighbor.
Is that across the walkway?
Yes.
So that would be in excess of that twenty feet.
And how do I know that?
You don't.
Thank you.
Don't have code.
So location of existing and proposed structures, is that something we need to put on our list?
Yes.
But to the north?
To the north is right there. I'll show you.
It's twenty-one feet nine inches.
Correct. Straight north.
Twenty-one feet two inches.
It's straight up there.
Building to the north, I don't see any. Oh, twenty-one point nine, I see that. Okay, I see it. So, location of existing and proposed structures. Are we good with that?
I'm good with that.
Are we good with that? What about the ones, the stained glass, and the other building that's empty that is to your west? I see twenty-two point six.
So any building that would be in that, let's say, twenty to thirty foot range is drunk. If they're in excess of that, it's not necessary. We didn't do all the ones in the PUD. We just did the ones that were adjacent.
So location of existing and proposed structures, we're good on that? That's a check. Is that...
I'm good on that.
I'm good on that. Okay. Location, let's see, architectural rendering illustration of proposed development. He's provided us with three architectural renderings, elevation, which is a very handsome looking building. I appreciate you putting in the extra stone work and the tree-like supports and things. I think that's a really nice addition to it.
I do have one question about it. If you notice in Trillium Cove, they're all log cabin-ish. Was that a requirement of that PUD? Is that, because this does not, is not a log cabin? That is a question I do not know.
If that is a requirement of the PUD Association, that's something that we don't enforce and it's not approved, so it'd be something within the...
I asked Chad Rochelle about that because he's one of the longest, and he said that in the covenants of Trillium Cove, it's just wood and stone mix of some sort. Some can be odd, some can be, in fact, Chad's places like some kind of lab site.
Right, right. So your siding, what is it? It's hard to tell by this picture.
We ordered one.
Are you like, okay.
So, kind of funny story in the rendering. I think Chad, there's a building in there that's painted that color.
Okay. And then I was just...
We rendered that intentionally to say, oh, look, there's the neighbor. He's the same color.
And I just had another question about the PUD as well. If you look around, all of them have crawl spaces, and it does not appear yours does. Is that a requirement of PUD?
No.
So that was, so all of them are just built like that?
Yeah, this site's flat, it's a main gate. So what you have to understand, this is an older PUD. Today, what am I sitting in?
Oh, right, right, right.
So accessibility is monumental today where it wasn't twenty years ago. And so that's why the tower's on the back. Do you know what that is?
I'm gonna guess elevator, but I could not tell by your...
It's a silo. It's an elevator.
Also, to your point, one of the conditions, one of the things I looked at or I've looked into was, I looked at a lot of the other restaurants, and a lot of them are built on a crawl space, and that is an absolute nightmare for a food operator because you always get mice and stuff living underneath you. So I was clear with that from the beginning. I want a slab. I don't want anything crawling underneath that place.
Mayor, do you have a question?
Yeah, one of the questions I was gonna have about it is accessibility, and you started to touch on it. And if you could tell me a little bit more about that, because that's...
I'm there.
I hear you.
So basically, the building that I'm gonna get it, is recorded.
This is one of my issues that I'm very interested in.
So the site in this one is, you understand, this was the PUD. And so everything's kind of prepared. I mean, one of the things is gonna be discussion utilities. They're all stubbed up. There's two septic tanks in the back that are grease separators. They're already there for a restaurant. That's why I'm trying to explain earlier.
I've already seen them. I work in Trillium Cove, I'm very aware.
Yeah, and so the second grease separators are already there for restaurants. But anyway, we tried to marry this thing grade-wise to where there's a grading plan there. That's kind of funny, there's no under. And it's because we're not moving that. We're gonna basically go in there, skim a little bit of topsoil off where it is, and lay the building in there. So there's a ring of code sidewalk that already goes around this property. We're tying into that. And so the thing that Rob described, first floor is kitchen. Second floor is actually the restaurant. So I've got an elevator going back that's gonna take us up to the second floor. So that accessibility there, and then of course, the first floor, there's one area in one end of the building. What you see on that front is for light pickup. You know, I call in an order and I run in a door and, you know, pick up. So we've got, in today's world, we do handicaps, that's on four sides of a building. You just do. And so in this picture, one even what we're doing, we've got porches wrapped around this thing. We're four and five foot sidewalk all the way around this thing. Backside where there's no doors and windows and stuff, that's where I'm putting a joint. You know, that's where the heating air units are. And there was a question about a propane tank that's back there. We might bury that. I'm afraid of what that all sit in the ground.
Okay, so all the seating for the restaurant, including folks with accessibility, is gonna be on the second level? And the way you're gonna address it is have an elevator? There's no seating on this first floor, it's just your kitchen?
There's like six or seven seats in that little lobby in the front level, a little counter. People wanna sit there if they can.
It says the building is an elevator. I'm sorry.
And the number of parking spots and everything is already prescribed in the PUD? Is that right?
I think there's one hundred and twenty-seven.
Well, okay, and handicap accessible?
There are five. There are five. I counted them today. And none of them are near this building, unfortunately. They may have to, he may feel obligated to hang these one or two.
Yeah, they got rid of them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's my question. I figure while we're on this subject, I'd go ahead and ask my question right there.
Gary, as a developer of several PUDs, ordinances and names can be quite strict. You have gone over both of them and reviewed all the ordinances and names and all that pertain to the PUD. The PUD is almost like an HOA, you know?
And his story is...
There's the worst, yeah. We're good. And like I say, Chad, who is very familiar, obviously, with the Trillium, we've fed him with wrong thought along, you know?
Here's the developer, you know?
You know, because there's some things, we've stepped a little bit outside the footprint of PUD. But they've done that on every building that they've built there. Things like porches and stairways and balconies and stuff. Every building that's there gets outside the PUD footprint. So that's why, again, and the dimensions that we've got, to the adjacent buildings, we've got to, we probably built this a long time ago. We've done that, so, anyway.
All right. Next question. Let's see, that was architectural rendering. Location of existing proposed utilities. So you've got the stubouts at the back showing where the electric would come up?
Yes, sir. So the electric stubout, because you can stick their screw stubs in the Melred Shaft. Sewer tanks are already there. Waters valves are in that back. Again, as they did the development, everything was...
Where's your water on this plan? I found your septic.
So there's a water valve out there.
But I don't see your water here.
So there's water valves on that backside, too.
But are they on the plans?
Yes, sir.
Where?
Yeah. Do you, the old guy, direct you exactly?
And is there a meter already set there?
Well, they've got symbols, and I think the symbols are probably for water.
Yes.
Yeah, I see like the...
The main water meter for the whole building.
See to the, there's a colored triangle with a circle just to the left back grid.
I don't have any color.
Well, it's not in color. It's just a circle with a white triangle.
Okay, so where is the key? Where's the key? Where does that tell me that's water?
It's in the water.
Is that acceptable to everyone else that reflects water?
Here's the electric.
Mike, I think they pointed to where the electric is and labeled it. It seems like they went through water and labeled it.
Yes, I agree. Because you pointed to septic, you pointed to...
I'll put it up on the board. It's all right.
Now, this wastewater treatment facility, is it required you to have like a solid septic tank outside your building that's picked up, pumped to this area? Or is all the solids round and pumped to it?
Good question.
I noticed the two septic tanks, and they're gonna label those grease traps. I didn't know if there needed to be a solid septic tank.
Yeah, I talked to the operations manager at Tennessee Wastewater today. I asked him that question because I think you were the one that asked me if we had a tank that we could put down. And he said, no, the tanks are probably already there. But he said, a lot of times in middle Tennessee where they're located, each business has its own tank. And he said, out here, for some reason, he's discovered that a lot of the communities have communal tanks, like everything runs into those tanks, and then it gets pumped. I've seen the pumps. But in our case, we'll have the extra step of stuff coming from the kitchen passing those grease traps first, then into that stuff. I don't think we each get a tank.
And all of that, if you go back to the master plan, you can see it's kind of off the prop. When this was approved as a PUD, there was Trillium Cove, but there was also a residential that was a big enough piece of property. And you can see in that master plan where all the septic area is in the background was originally addressed.
One more thing to your point. The fellow I talked to, Josh from Tennessee Wastewater, told me today that regardless of whether we have to have a tank or not, that that's just something that they'll take care of to hook up with any real management. That's our job. I think all of your lines are already placed. They'll just be putting additional pump or things like that. He basically said, you're not hooking up to our system to meet our criteria and standards. So sewer supply.
Right. I called and talked to them as well, and they said that you will get a will let letter. And you had just submitted your information, they started on Tuesday, and they would not have your will let letter by today.
I have, I have a letter that they sent me today.
I saw it.
Okay. But I actually didn't apply recently. I actually applied a year and a half ago.
Yes, she did say that you applied, and she said that the engineer that approved your plans a year and a half ago was no longer there. She was going to have to resign it to a new engineer. And plans had, and rules had changed. So they were going to have to look at it, and they would not have a letter by today.
Okay. But you did get the letter, did you?
I did, but is that a will let letter? Because that, we would use that instead of the health department approval because the health department would normally approve the septic. And in lieu of that, it would be a will let letter.
And that was the mail from Bill Wilson that said the county's not part of this?
Well, we know the county's not part of this.
I'm not trying to beat this point to death, but you did get the letter from Tennessee Wastewater today that said that TDT approved it. And that they were gonna, it says it, like, we are gonna take this business. They are gonna have it.
It says the sewer system has been permitted and approved for operation by the state Tennessee Department of Fire and Conservation is operated by our public utility. Tennessee wastewater systems has the ability to serve the above referenced waters.
Right. So that's not until number sixteen I was gonna go over with that.
So it says it has the ability, but I guess we need clarification that they're actually gonna let you do it. They're capable.
Well, you've got a card in your pocket because we're all of them's free lines. And so if they get into us and they're like, okay, the capacity of what you're doing now, then we're gonna go, okay, third block over here, there's no longer buildable on. We'll take the allowance for that and add it to this. So we'll work it out. It's not a question.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be able to, that's a big question. So we wouldn't be able to approve this until that is answered. The septic is huge.
In their letter, they just said they would do that.
Right, so I guess I could give them a call back and ask if this is a will let letter.
Yeah, I got feeling today when I talked to Mr. Josh that he was, he just wants to be the...
Well, you know, it...
Like you said, we're obligated, we're obligated.
Exactly. Full disclosure, the original investors of Trillium Cove put up $250,000 to have this built, and then they had to turn it over. And when they turned it over, that company had to agree that they would service, would be able to service Trillium Cove when it is all built out. So you have that card in your pocket as well. We just have to cover our bases here to make sure your septic has a place to go.
Okay, anything else on existing and proposed utilities?
It's labeled.
Yeah, I know. NFPA requires ten feet clearance between electrical and propane. And I, it's really important. I got caught with that. Mine was only eight feet, and I had to move it.
So if you notice this propane tank on the side plan, there's a dimension of ten feet from the propane tank to the building.
Oh, I'm asking this because I didn't have this...
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, we did that.
Well, okay, because I know where the septic tanks are, and I know where your electrical is. I don't know that there's ten feet there, ten feet to seven, unless you're gonna go this way. You're gonna go...
The electrical stubout from the...
It's underneath the rock, right?
They're in the way all the way. Actually, those electrical stubouts you're talking about there, those are just like some 110 lines, I think, that went to some sort of plug. The actual electrical, I think, is gonna eventually come from that big transformer that's right next to the pump. It's almost like that.
Okay, but you're reflecting the electrical plug where it is right now on this right here. Yes, but that's not on here.
Okay. We'll need to note that that plug will be removed.
Okay, so we'll do the electric. We'll move, to be moved. And the propane will be ten feet.
That's already labeled.
The propane is labeled, but it's right by the electrical.
But we'll not take the plug out.
But what's labeled right now? Propane will be ten feet from electrical.
Anything else on proposed utilities? Proposed landscaping design.
And this is the question I have. If you look at every cabin around Trillium Cove, they have landscaping. Is that, is that Trillium Cove's PUD requirement? Because you were saying that you're gonna tie it to the sidewalk, which would not leave room for landscaping.
Now, there's, I mean, the sidewalk is done. We're not completely paving from the building to the existing sidewalk. We're tying it. You'll notice there's a couple of spaces that we're actually tying to the existing sidewalk. The rest are...
So...
See, look at your register.
So, location of, let's see, proposed landscape design?
We're not doing any landscaping outside of our footprint.
Right, but my question is, if you look at every cabin that's out there, they have landscaping. Is that a PUD requirement? That's my question. And that would not be our requirement, that would be Trillium Cove's PUD requirement.
The PUD requirement.
Right.
Thinking work that out.
Mike, I got one more question. I'm getting confused. The building is clearly shown up here. He's talking about sidewalks, stairways, and balconies that are not inside that property. Is that appropriate? I mean, that's like the building on my neighbor's property.
Is what appropriate, sidewalks?
No, the stairway. For instance, the stairway going up to the second floor is not inside the building. It's outside. It's outside the zero lot line area.
It's outside your property line.
And I'm just asking you if that's appropriate or not.
That is a good question.
We went over that with Chad at the beginning, and he said that they had allowed all the buildings that were there, and I mentioned this earlier, to exceed the PUD footprint for front porch and these stairs are emergency access stairs. And so he said they had allowed that on all the buildings that were developed there. That's why we chose to do that.
But there's more than just that stairway. That was an example. About the dining area on the top of the, on the porch on the second floor is also outside your footprint. And I'm asking the chairman if that's appropriate or not. But do we accept it?
That probably is.
Or do we need a letter?
That would be, that'd have to be an agreement between the PUD and the applicant.
Do we need to make sure it's a, a volcano before we accept it?
I would think so. Before we issued a building permit and site plan that was outside the meets and bounds of your actual parcel, we need to get a memo of understanding or agreement with other PUD individuals that you would be building on a common area as long as they permitted.
Yes, sir. We, I wrestle with bringing the president of the PUD here and Chad and a couple others. And I'm like, I don't think it would be necessary.
Just, just put that as enough.
Okay, so we're going to require a waiver from the PUD for landscaping and that your building is extending your property lines.
Okay, proposed location, type, and dimensions of signage?
On the revised plan, I gave the alterations. We have the old sign that we've got on there.
The signs.
What are those signs?
It's on the third, it's on the third page of the. They have a wall sign that has the dimensions of five foot six and six foot five.
And that's the sign that makes them record.
And does that fall within our signage? What, what is it? What should it not exceed?
Oh, no, 64 square feet for a wall sign.
A combination of wall signs permitted for 100 by 25 building, maximum wall signage permitted 64 square feet.
And that's only if they have 64 linear feet along the side. And these guys do, they have 67 change. So they're, they can have 64 square feet on a six.
So what do you have?
Well, I think 5 by 6.
They've got 6 by 5 and 5 by 6.
That brings us to a stand.
Well, it's 30 square feet. We're half.
Just wanted to make sure that's clear. Now, and, and they're not eligible for a freestanding sign. Because the PUD has permission only for the freestanding sign. So they might have to negotiate with the PUD to get their name.
Yeah, there's some empty spots on. I'm sure you've seen the sign.
Yes, they told me they were saving those spots. We've been looking at this for years, so they now have us in mind for that. But I've watched Townsend and the sign, you know, they show around Townsend, and I've been running the tip tour around that. It's definitely, we don't need no sign.
And also, and just be aware, there's three building, or, you know, it's one building, three, what is it, businesses that could go in there? So they would need signage as well. Those are empty right now.
Right.
So, and you see where they were on there, and then when they replaced the sign, because the sign blew down.
Yes.
They went ahead and put the whole businesses on the sign, and then you can see where they sanded them on. So just be aware that there's three more businesses that can go in there.
Yes, I've.
More than that, but.
I've been at Townsend Ice Cream for years, and I know that the word sign is a touchy subject.
Yes, it is.
We're going to make sure we don't do any single signs that we're not supposed to do the sign. And I feel like if this building gets built the way Gary designed it, it's a sign. It is a sign. And you're coming out of where it's valid. Now, passing this, you're not going to, you're not going to be able to overlook it.
It's a very cool building. I love, I love the trees.
He did a wonderful job. I'm super happy.
Okay, the next three items we have here pretty much are addressed with the PUD master plan. We've got a drainage plan, which topography has got. They're not going to move any. And we've got the parking design and the dedicated easements.
I have a question about drainage. Okay, where, where their building is now, if you look at it, it's kind of almost a little bit of a bowl. So you're going to have to bring in, I'm guessing.
We're going to check it out.
Yeah.
But you've got to understand that when you build a building, you dig.
Right, right. I'm just.
I got dirt from puddings. I got dirt, you know, I got to get the topsoil off. So I want to have a little pile of dirt.
Okay.
I'm setting the floor elevation up just slightly above the adjacent sidewalks, not to exceed what I'm about to do any of that wise for ramps. So it, what you see there, what I finished, you know, both of the things.
Okay, but my question about drainage is, you know, right now it's a grass field, and now it's, and now it's going to have a roof.
Right.
And so is it going to have gutters and downspouts?
Yes.
Okay, so where is that water going to go? Because that green space is no longer there, and you're so close to the sidewalk. Is it going to cause a flooding issue?
So the original PUD shouldn't have drainage in that, if you want that was approved originally.
Right, but when you put that building in there, what's it going to do to the drainage?
That original PUD would have taken into consideration everything that was going to be in purpose. It wasn't assuming that these were going to be grass forever.
Oh, I'm aware.
That's how you run the calculations for stormwater.
Right. So I'm just wondering, where the rain that hits your roof, is it going to cause a flooding problem? Is that something we can let the PUD wave with all these other things that we're not going to worry about?
It does affect the lights already being counted. It was already been calculated. It was already done.
You've been down there a lot of times. You've consulted. So I don't know if you've noticed the sidewalks are like here.
They're falling apart.
They appear to be falling apart, but I've been brought to understand that all that concrete, and most of the concrete in the parking lot is semi-permeable. That's instant drainage of water.
That's, yeah, that's the reason they have that, because of the runoff.
Yes.
That's why they were, they were required to do the runoff.
So that works out.
Okay, so we're not going to worry about flooding neighboring businesses. We're not going to address it. Got it?
I still have a question about that, Mike. If they build beyond their footprint, they're covering up part of the area that would absorb rainwater all the way around the building. Does that affect the drainage? And do we need the drainage plan since they're changing what the PUD originalations evaluated before they've impressed this?
So I suggest that we get, since we're going to PUD to waiver landscape design, the building extending the property line, that, that they will be held accountable for the drainage, that they're going to waive any of our drainage, drainage plan.
You might as well put on there the parking and the easements as well, a bunch of great holes.
Okay, drainage has nothing to do?
But it's all established from the PUD was created originally, you know, so.
So you have a problem with asking, just checking with the PUD about drainage?
No, I said if you're going to ask about drainage, you might as well ask about parking and easements and everything as well.
The addition, the addition of another handicap spot.
Yeah, if you want the PUD to issue a waiver resolving us of those calculations and requirements, then I would add them all together.
I don't anticipate any problem.
I wouldn't anticipate with that little extra roof that would create any kind of flooding situation.
You don't run the numbers that tight.
No.
There's, there's such a safety factor in what you do there, because you don't know.
Yeah, that has to be.
Have that under your flood?
No, well, not yet. It has to meet the five, the 20, or the 70.
We have had some good floods.
All right, so we've got the drainage plan, the parking design, dedicated easements. I guess there's no easements on this parcel. That's why they're not located. I did have a question about the loading zone locations.
Yes, sir.
Delivery trucks.
It's right, it's located on the site, on the master plan. You'll see kind of a 100 ABR. There's a spot there, pretty good sized spot, a percent line, just to pull in, load the concrete wider there. That's like the main, that's the main building, the whole complex.
Okay, is it on this?
Right here. It's still many lines on here. It's hard to see. Here's parking at this very regular hood that just says loading area. Pull right in here. It's where you can size it.
730.
This is the first time all plant owners have built the plants that I saw right on the day. It's super important to us because, as you know, a restaurant, the restaurant I have in Florida, we, we get, we get two trucks a week, $7,000 worth of food on each truck. That's going to be brought in, then you got boxes and garbage filled out. So it's, it's very important for us.
Did you guys see that?
Well, I didn't see it, and I'll ask. Is that the space between? Yeah, why don't you show me?
Yeah, put it.
Yes. So right here, here's where you can actually drive around this area right here. It's pretty, it's pretty big space, big enough for a seminary.
How familiar with that space?
They can put a seminary down. But it's a good sized space, and the sidewalk is, is like, I think it's seven feet wide.
Well, this has got a huge parking area inside. It's not curved. I mean, and, and most of the deliveries are, are local.
Right. I would, the only thing I was concerned about is that if, say, part of the truck goes through your building, then you would block traffic.
Absolutely.
That's, that's.
And that, honestly, that's a problem with every restaurant and plant there. I mean, we have that problem. We have four exits from my previous restaurant that you can get in and out of, and those trucks still block everything. So we always encourage them to come early. And we don't plan to be open early, so that should cut down drastically the amount of cars around there. I don't know if you've seen Trillium on average day, but they deliver more than six cars in the whole complex.
Right.
If we're not open, it should be quite a bit, pretty empty.
Right. But what I was thinking, yes, I know the back parking lot, and yes, I know you have plenty of room to do that. But you know the closest sidewalk, right next to the artist cabin?
Yes.
That has access, if he were to park right there, which is the closest to your building, it's going to block traffic.
Well, the good thing about this is I'll have 100% control over those guys. They want to keep some before 10,000 other food. So it bites off. You can't park there, you can't come at this time, everything. They will, they'll respect that.
So your loading will be done. The trucks will be parked back by the dumpsters.
I want it back there, because like you said, if they park where you just said, and there was other cars parked there, it would complete a traffic fiasco, to be honest.
It would block, it would block everything.
Yeah, it would be a case of. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's the loading zone, number 13, 14, refuse, storage, collection, and disposal plans. I have existing dumpsters at the back of the property. I believe you mentioned that you're going to lease at least two.
We'll have to.
Two more dumpsters, and they'll be the same location.
We get 10% of the business that the socials get, we may have to have 40, I don't know. The good thing about your local garbage service here, TC Environmental, I'm from, mine only come once a week, and that's it. They will not come more than that. So you just have to have water. TC Environmental gives you an option. They'll give you two dumpsters, but they'll also come twice a week. So that's super awesome.
And Chad has his empty twice a week.
He asked.
We have ours once a week, because we don't have that much.
Mike, the city commission is leaning towards passing an ordinance that requires dumpsters to be bearproof. And so these guys need to know that.
I think all of them back there are. They all have a big metal clip that was supplied by TC Environmental. So yeah.
I just, I want to make sure it's said. And the other half of it is everybody has trouble with those clips being.
Clipped.
By their employees.
Oh, yeah, that can be managed.
Yeah, but anyway, I wanted you to know that there is going to be an ordinance that requires bear proof.
And just make sure that your lid is metal and not plastic. Because the plastic ones, they go right through, the bears will go right through.
I think all the ones in Trillium are metal. They all have that brass clip.
Right.
Chad says 25 people come and dump it.
Right, well, the problem with Chad, Chad's done this, and I'm not talking about him, Chad, he's done the best he can. But his housekeepers will come, and they will stack it. So what's the point of having a bear resistant dumpster if your garbage is hanging out of your dumpster? But he does have his empty twice a week.
Yes.
Yeah, and in peak season, he should have two, but also off season, you know, so we just kind of live with it.
Yes.
All right, that's refuse, storage, disposal planes, approval letter from curb cut. The curb is preexisting, was cut back in 2004. So that's not applicable, number 15. Number 16, health department approval, applicable, and we were requesting a letter from the, the Dena's Tennessee wastewater. Not just that they have the capacity, but they will be, they will let you hook up.
I think that's one call.
Yeah.
One phone call, and I think I can have it to you tomorrow. They seem very cooperative.
Okay, so that was number 16. 17, location of any toxic volatile or flammable materials. We have your propane tank is delineated on the back, which we're going to get that electrical plug removed off of it.
So we don't have firework.
That's right. That's number 17. Number 18, topography of existing finished grades. You do have topo lines on here, but it's going to stay relatively exactly flat.
I, I can't draw them down there.
There's not enough elevation.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have flood hazard identification applicable?
Put a note on it. I think of the general notes. Remember, the last one where it says general project notes. I think the very last item on it says this is not.
Site is not in the flood zone.
General project notes, I have number nine, there's a note, site is not in the flood zone, so that has been addressed. Lighting plan.
Lighting, I'm sorry. What I'm concerned about the lighting plan is, your picture appears that you have up lighting, and we don't do up lighting.
That, that may be.
Just the way.
That may be, that may be artistic license.
And we just want you to know that we have dark sky issued in trying to make sure all lighting points down. And that's complicated in some, some situations, but it's still important.
Faragick is 10 years ahead of you. They've been playing with that forever. So we're not really stepping outside the building and doing any lighting. It's porch lighting. That's pretty much what all this is, is lighting to cover the porches and stuff like that. So I mean, we can run photo papers, the fine foot outside the building is going to be zero.
Yeah, as long as it's not pointing up. If you notice around Trillium Cove, all the outdoor lights have the cover on them that make them point down.
I've been doing Faragick for 30 years, so we, we know how the dark sky.
Let's do it. Our, our skies are important.
Well, I agree. I mean, you look, you used to look across Black Canyon on a good football Friday night.
Oh, yeah.
You know where all the high schools are.
So Mike, do we need a written white warning that's required, like in section 8-311?
You can, you can make, probably dress that as another note, just as the flood zone that any exterior lighting will all be down or facing.
Because we want, we're going to have to come back.
Yeah.
So if, if that's, if that's a note, we need to put on there.
And if, if you could delineate the outdoor package lighting you're going to have as, as far as wattage, so we have an understanding of the limited output, you know, just so they have to give a sizable entry.
We have to have their electrical drawings.
Oh, you do?
We just didn't do those sheets, too.
Okay.
There was like, because the building package is just not, it's like, but like I said, we were in photo papers on the building, too.
Yeah.
If you want some foot panel around the building, that's.
Well, if you have that information already generated, might as well.
We do. So what we typically do in our electrical drawings, yes, we have cut sheet fixtures. So when you look on the drawing, it doesn't say, oh, light layer L4732. You can look up, oh, this is what that light sure looks like. So we'll give you those sheets, if that helps.
I'd like to see something.
Yeah, put candles around it.
We'll put more information there.
Yes, and I can just tell you, we're not going to trouble up the system anyway. Yes, and I can just tell you, we're not gonna turn up the system anyway, and we're, we live here in the city. We don't wanna change it.
We're just after the building, and you can see by the riggers that we did more of a night, we just wanted to go low at night, just a little bit.
Go low on, just a little bit.
Just enough so that you can drive by and see somebody up on that porch, gobbling up something, and then say, I wanna go there.
Yeah, oh, you'll drive through traffic, and the traffic is what we need. Okay, Mike, I have another question about the height of the building, is it on the plans?
Well, it's not down to the water.
Thirty-five foot.
I was trying to think, I was like, thirty-five.
To the midline, right?
So, it's twenty-five to the E, and then to the midline of the roof. It's not over another ten feet.
It's not on here.
I understand.
So, Mike, did you mention on the overall elevation?
Okay, so, only ask a question then. Do you, building heights defined two different ways, if you go by the International Building Code, it's not peak. It's the, of a slope roof, it's half of the slope. So, is your definition to peak or to average height of the roof?
That's Doug.
Well, that's Doug, our building inspector.
It's to the peak.
It's to the.
Our requirement is to the peak.
No, it's not.
I thought you said it was.
That's what we've been helping people.
It's not, it's in the ordinance. The ordinance, Mike, was rewritten to allow measurement to the, and I think the wrong is exactly halfway in the roof.
So, that's, if you look in the International Building Code, that's how the definition is. So, that's why, that's why I went back to clarify that, because I thought that's what I read too.
And we knew that when you were on the phone.
And it's been twelve years.
So, it's not to the peak, it's to the midline of the roof.
Well, we've been, we've been overcompensating for two years there.
If you read it, that's what it says.
So, here's my thing.
We haven't had the one, we haven't had the one guy that was close anyway, so.
Well, this one, this one peaks over thirty-five, but not a lot, but if you go average, we're gonna shut it maybe close. I can't cut my trees down.
So, it's important that you find what your, your average, and maybe total, that way everyone.
That's fine.
But since he's our enforcer, should we?
Where is it in the, where is it in the order?
Doug, where's in the ordinance?
I, I don't know.
I remember reading it when I was going through there.
Pigeons is here. I think this was something, I guess.
Is it six foot? No. It's, oh, yeah, it is.
Six.
Fifth exchange.
Six, oh, wait, four.
Where are the yard and the apartment section anymore?
You got it. But if we do thirty-five, which is a ten-foot roof.
It is a ten.
Then at thirty-five. I think he sent that last month or seven to me.
Well, we're talking about it, but I don't.
So, I think Chuck's, he actually.
I looked at him, Rob, Tim, Jack, he wanted to circle for twenty feet off the ground, and I was like. He got a sitter that went out on the side. And loaded up, but he got, he wanted to say. It's not a elevator, I have actually two of them.
What did you say?
It's all. No, seven, there are two totally different elevators, so one will be for clean, and one will be for air.
Okay.
So, what is it?
We'll come back. Just making that.
Mike, I want to, if you wanna see building type illustrated, it's on page five.
Page five?
Yep. And your building.
There, right there, yep.
Okay.
Page five.
Yep.
Average distance. Highest point of the finished grade to the average. It was the top E to the top ridge.
So, it is top of the ridge, and what is, what is the type of restriction?
Average is between the ridge and the.
So, what would it be?
The definition of building height. Building height is the vertical distance measured at the highest point of the finished grade at the building to the average distance between the highest top of the E's and the highest top of the ridge.
Okay, what's your ridge line?
Not something that'll fall out by here.
Yeah, ridge line is about twenty-five feet, the distance twenty-five.
It's the average.
Yeah, yeah. Average, is that even five?
Yeah, our design, we're trying to get it high enough where you can still lose and not exceed classes. That's high. I talked to somebody two years ago. It's a little midline, so that's what I would say. It'll give us ten foot ceiling, it's a side, still allow it to be under five thousand.
All right, so are there any other considerations?
I don't have the answer.
Go ahead.
The height of the building, what is it?
It's the midline, whatever the midline is.
Well, what's the restriction, is there, we can't go a hundred feet in the air, what is it? Thirty-five, okay, thirty-five.
Thirty-five foot to this definition.
Got it. And right now, this exceeds that, correct?
No. I think we're below. We, that was something I, I checked on right off the bat, before we even bought the lots, I was like, because like I said, I rented a lift, and I just brought it out there in my lot, lifted myself up, I wasn't afraid of heights, it was awful, but I did see that at fifteen feet to the floor, and then we got the ten-foot ceiling, and then the midline, it shouldn't be well on here.
Because I think the only thing that exceeds it right now is the Burger Master ice cream cone, isn't it? That was an exception.
The archive center.
You're thirty-one feet to the mid.
Thirty-one feet, so.
Thirty-one feet.
So, I don't know this kind of.
Okay, these drawings are just, the big sheets are just scalable, so I measured it.
Okay, so, is this a requirement that we're going, or are we okay?
He should have, he'll have that dimension added, added so, that it meets our requirement, satisfies.
They just add it.
Yeah.
No, because they're gonna, they're gonna give you a lever.
They'll get a lever, and they're gonna go back and watch that video.
Out of curiosity, how many bathrooms do you have?
A lot. I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm bad, it's here. I know there's some, as far as, I think there's two two-hoppers on the top floor.
Bathrooms?
Yeah, there's a female and a man, both with two floors.
Yeah, upstairs have two stalls.
And they put in private bathroom for the staff, so that when you, I think it's gross when you go to a restaurant, you see a guy that they can come out with a bathroom. They, we have that at other restaurants, so I don't avoid that. We have bathrooms, a secret bathroom in our office, but I don't wanna share.
There's two exterior, there's two bathrooms that we created on the first floor, that go into the outside of the building. So, if anybody's sitting outside and have to go bathroom, they don't have to go inside the restaurant.
Or waiting in line to go upstairs. We don't do lines like that, but.
So, but obviously, who looks at building occupancy for bathrooms, and there are four what wrong. So, you just can't do that for a restaurant, it requires one toilet for every seventy-five women, and one for every hundred and fifty men. So, in this restaurant, we, by code, would have one each.
Right, that's such a measure you have in fourth.
That doesn't work. We know that, yeah.
Yeah, it's, we've done that at our first restaurant, you can't have that.
Yep, that's, one of them is handicap accessible.
Probably all.
Although I miss that.
Well, coming back on that point, I do have one more question, because I was looking now at the general notes, and the number of handicap parking spaces says ten here, is it ten, versus five?
There are only five in the whole development, and the nearest one is about a hundred and fifty feet from their entrance, so.
It's by the flooding zone?
I will get permission from Chad, or whoever, but couples.
Those concerns are not being there. Well, those kind of concerns, we will address that, but we're not gonna get any resistance from the members of the building. They are probably.
All right. All right, any other questions or considerations, so, yep, we will have to compile a letter with all these things, and get them out to you. Ken, you'll help us with that? Yeah, I'll work with you.
So, quick question. Do you, so will you come back before this board to take that property line out?
Take the property line out, do the total acreage.
We've got a surveyor that surveyed the property, so we just need to get them to create a plat so that we can get that recorded, correct?
And that's same video, Ken?
Yeah, yeah, I just, what I'd like to do is do that next time, along with this, okay? So, we go, look.
So, it's a real.
Property line's gone, and then you go, oh, look, it's gone, there's a plan approved of that.
Yeah, so, they're requesting another agenda for next week, we'll remove the property line between the two parcels. So, you'll provide, you're gonna provide a flat showing that you're joining those parcels for us to.
Next month.
Next month. Did I say week? I bring it up. Yeah, we can, we can remove that, join the two parts.
So, Mike, the next week, we're gonna bring proof that's also the point, all the other items that we, the letter that it's gonna have, three or four things.
And you'll turn that in.
Thank you.
So, you have to review it.
Obviously, I did. And this has cost us almost two hours, we started at six o'clock.
We, we have a job, it's, it works the first.
Oh, fifteen minutes, okay, hour and a half.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, we will, we'll look at this again at the next week, no, next meeting.
Thanks, folks.
And I'm just copying my notes for you, just so you'll be able to head set, this is not official, do you want that? Or you wanna write for it? Should I give them a quick?
Look, no. What do you say? No, please give it to me, I also advise you to watch the video.
I haven't seen it in a couple days. You're gonna give me an actual letter?
Uh, I'm not gonna give it out to my offices, we, I'm on site. We'll compile it later. Exactly, make sure we go on these other points.
We try to get there.
I've said to you this meeting twice, I watched it, I wish I'd taken this.
I'll dig it.
So, maybe come see our new office.
We have, we have a move.
Looking forward to your reservation.
I think we're inside.
Now, I've moved down a little, so it's rough.
If you go on the YouTube video, you can go to the.
It was my grandmother's house.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my sister.
But understand, this is not official.
My wife said, you're so.
Well, this is, this is not my concern, this is our concern.
It was our project, and I think I'll follow it one day. And I'm just getting.
Moving on, we're still, we're still on session here with the meeting, so this will be, yes, yes, sir.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate that, I'm almost considering. It's not that bad, I've been building, see, we did all of our value.
Four years.
See, I've got Gil, Hudson, and Earl Campbell, and they were kicking cloths trying to play with the golf course.
All right, continuing with the meeting, new business item number two is a session of corridor management. We were provided documentation from T-Dot outlining the corridor management agreement guidelines of our land and regulations.
There you go, we'll help some of yours in the video.
Keep it down, all right, so, this was a document that was developed by the Tennessee Department of Transportation to encouraging municipalities to join the partnerships to manage transportation corridors within its domes. And I read through it, and, well, I got through like forty pages of it anyway, and has everybody else had a chance to read this article?
I have not, I did not really copy. I don't know, because you're saying I have, if I don't see it, I didn't have it. I was just going to.
All right. I guess we just open it up to discussion, first of all. What is a corridor management plan? And how is it implemented, and what do we use it for? Apparently, when communities have new roadways that they're gonna be building, or they have development that's coming in in certain areas of the community that's increasing traffic flows, or if it's between multi-jurisdictional groups, like two cities, municipalities, or the state, and they're trying to regulate corridor over a long length of jurisdictions, then they come to an agreement as to how it's gonna be managed, what the problems that may occur, and the partners they need to address to, to enter into these kinds of agreements to create solutions. Mayor. I thought you heard like one of the same.
Well, I do wanna come in on the discussion, you're doing great.
So, in, in addressing this, there's, there's some key considerations that I look at. First of all, you gotta look at, you know, do we have problem areas, or are proposed future areas where there'll be consideration that we need to address before we do have problems? There's a little bit of work that goes into developing a corridor management plan, you develop a committee, you have shareholders, stakeholders, you have a mission statement, you have a vision, you actually have resources you have to gather and allocate, and put toward, put toward the plan. So, with that, Mayor, if you want to say some things.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, recalling previous meetings, I'm encouraging the planning commission to take this up. I think there are some unique features of Townsend, I mean, I've heard it said, we're long and skinny, and in fact, three twenty-one corridor, in addition to being the face of Townsend, thinking about the green buffer zone, thinking about our bike trail, thinking about those things, are important to our residents, being able to see the mountains, see the river, get to the river in places. This corridor is a critical feature of the city of Townsend, we need to pay attention to it. Currently, a significant portion of what are vacant lots are Zone B one. And eventually, somebody may want to build on those lots, and we need to pay attention to, you know, how many road cuts are coming. Currently, we have no way to coordinate with T-Dot. I'm frequently greeted by emails and calls from citizens, they've seen a road cut come in, and now there's a big thing that looks basically like a parking lot along three twenty-one. City doesn't have any knowledge of that sometimes, so there's no, currently, no good mechanism for the city to coordinate with T-Dot. We have been working on a driveway ordinance in a permanent, that might be one way. If we had required that, T-Dot has told us that they would observe it, and they would coordinate with us whenever a road cut is requested, because they know we have an ordinance on the books that would apply, and therefore, they would use that as the mechanism to consult with us. But that's a very short-term ad hoc mechanism in my mind. I think we need to really seriously think about the three twenty-one corridor, if it's gonna have some of those features that are important to our residents now, that they tell us, I wanna be able to see the mountains, I wanna be able to manage traffic flows, I want to be conscious of pedestrian safety. Those are things that we need to plan for, they're not just gonna happen magically. And where we are now, we're on a piece-by-piece ad hoc sort of plan for thinking about that corridor that is the base of the city, it's our main transportation artery, it's our main pedestrian artery being adjacent to the bike path, and a sidewalk that's heavily used on the other side, and so I would really encourage this planning commission to think about and take up, in conjunction with T-Dot, a corridor management plan. Now, I've heard a city planner talk to us about this, and he's given some examples of other. of other municipalities that have engaged in corridor management plan. It sounds like it could be a very lengthy and extensive, expensive exercise. So, I'm thinking about some of the examples that you've given us. But after reading this document, while there is a structure for doing this, it doesn't necessitate that it be an elaborate process. It could be a very streamlined process that we could accomplish in a, you know, reasonable period of time and expenditure of resources. But what I've heard from our citizens is that we need to pay attention to this. And every time a road cut magically appears and a parking lot appears adjacent to it, you know, that will address, I think, you know, some of that concern. I think that concern is just emblematic of the problem, but the problem is much deeper and requires an intentional and long-term solution.
A quick question. So, if this is going to manage our corridor, which is the highway, and it's going to control curb cuts? What is it, what's the overall reasoning for that?
I think it's, it's a way, my understanding, and I'm, you know, not a civil engineer, but my understanding is that it helps to manage road cuts and consideration of traffic flows along the corridor.
Okay. Because I've been thinking about this as I drive through town. And I look at all the curb cuts that are already there, and I look at the flow, and I honestly don't know where there could be another curb cut, you know? And if there is property without a curb, if you own property, you're going to have to give them access to their property. You're going to have to cut the curb if that, if that is even a thing here in Townsend. And as far as traffic flow, we have a four-lane highway with a suicide lane. So, I'm, I'm asking, what would change? What would be the purpose to do this? Because, because of what we have already, what would be the purpose to put this time and energy and effort into it, considering what we already have?
Yeah, I don't disagree that there's already a tremendous number of curb cuts in there. And even despite the fact that I think, you know, where could you fit one more? It seems like they are, there are one more.
But the reason to put another one in would be to access that property, and can we say no?
Well, there's, if you go ahead, Mayor, if you let me. There's, there's other aspects to this as well, other than safety and access issues. Consider down at the Apple Valley store, so they have that, what you call that? A frontage road. I could see the use of frontage roads amongst some of these areas where we do have multiple driveways, you know, consolidate five or six of them into one entrance or exit. And that, that would be something good. It also addresses signage as well. Of course, we're on, we have the state rideaway there, but it might give us some leeway to state signage or identification markers that we might be able to put in that area in the, the rideaway.
Would the, would those sign controls supersede Townsend's sign controls? Because we already had sign controls.
Well, this, that would be delineated through the agreement of this plan with T-Dot, so...
Yeah. So, you see that my, the service road, I did not think of that. So, that, that could help with traffic flow. But I, I just couldn't come up with a reason to do a corridor study.
Well, and it does say here in this guide, and I found this to be pretty interesting. It says, "An agreement for a corridor segment residing entirely within a single jurisdiction would generally be unnecessary." In the true spirit of these, these management agreements, they seem to be interdepartmental, interjurisdictional agreements that, that... So, doing a full-blown plan would not be as necessary, as, as time-consuming as just entering into a, an understanding with, with a plan that's formulated to preserve the number of driveways that T-Dot's going to commit on the highway, you know? To encourage them to do these, these access roads to, to... There's not a full lot to manage. I agree with you. But there's some, some things we, we could look at, and...
And is this money, is this money that needs to be spent in this manner because we have other things that we could be spending? What makes this important now? I'm not saying it's not important. I'm saying there's probably other things we can spend money on, other than...
Mr. Chairman, several of the towns that I've worked with in the past, the developer itself, we have a big project known known up here. The city itself can have an ordinance requiring not only a sidewalk to be put in for that, but also frontage roads for accessibility. And not necessarily from the front, but from the rear. I've worked on many of those projects across thirteen southern states. Townsend's miniscule compared to some of this stuff, but it can be without an economic drain on the city council. I mean, not the city, but it's valid.
And another question, within, within the corridor study, you know, my favorite thing when I drive through Townsend is our view. You know, we still have trees. You know, we don't see business, 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 business. Is that something that we can control, that we can keep our buffer? Is that part of a corridor study or plan?
My, my sense, Commissioner Funk, is that this is one part of something that we need to pay attention to. We're going to have a presentation coming up next week with T-Dot talking about the rideaway agreement. And that's another important feature to address what you're talking about. One of the things that we've heard in our community plan is that things that people are really passionate about, that they want to preserve, are these things like the view shed, like the, you know, safety and traffic and things like that. So, a corridor management plan can only help us with certain things, but we'll need other things like thinking about the rideaway agreement and thinking about whatever else, you know, we might be able to do. We need to have as many tools as we can to be able to accomplish that. And if we don't think about it and plan for it, and we just let it happen, then we won't end up with the result ten years from now that, that I think our citizens want.
And with Becky Hedrick's experience, could she be in? Would it be possible, or have her to be in this group or that discussion, just lose her valuable input? Would that be possible?
I, I think, I think we should leverage everybody's special skills and expertise, including Commissioner Hedrick. She has a wonderful skill set. One of the things I've really come to appreciate in Townsend is that although we have, you know, not as many citizens or people as some larger communities, we have a tremendous amount of expertise. And so, we should make this a process where folks can come in. We have Mr. Riddle in here before. We've had other people that have prior experience that can help us with these things. So, I, you know, I've been super impressed on some of the different projects, how many of our local citizens and community members have skills. But I appreciate your point, Commissioner Hedrick. I'd love to be able to leverage your skills on that.
So, what is our goal today? The reason it was on the agenda, what is, what is our goal?
Well, I'm hoping that the planning commission will have a discussion on this and recommend to the city board of commissioners that we engage in a corridor management study with T-Dot. And we can put some guidance around that if we think it's appropriate to the board of commissioners. So, what we've been talking about is making it fit for purpose. It's not a, a big elaborate project, but it is something that, you know, will allow us to coordinate with T-Dot to a much greater extent than we'll have now. So, I would advocate that the planning commission would consider recommending, making a motion to recommend to the board of commissioners that we engage in a corridor management study with T-Dot.
And then it will be up to the commissioners to decide whether we do or we don't.
Then we have a discussion. We have public input.
Decide if you want to pass it on.
Yeah. I think it depends on what the, what the scale and scope of, of the plan is. So, your planner, do you have any reflection on what these things might cost you work with other communities?
Oh, I honestly have no idea. It all depends on how technical you want to get to what detail you want to have it done. And the bottom line is that T-Dot is going to ask you what you want, and T-Dot is going to enforce what you, the two of you can agree on. So, it could be anything from changing the design of the four of us through to Townsend. So, for example, you might choose to not have an open middle lane, but make it into a median so that cars have to go into the turn lane. Or you could figure out ways in which you would make sure that the adjoining properties are only accessed from the back. And you might also want to have other traffic comments and issues along the corridor. So, it all depends on what you want to do and whether it fits with any sort of generic design specs.
Do you think we could host a workshop?
Yeah, I've said this several times before, that this is one of the things that a workshop needs to happen.
And would ETDD participate or help convene that along with T-Dot?
Yeah, we're willing to do that. And I, I gave you mention, even going further than that is to think of some overlay districts that extend across the spans of that, of that corridor, you know?
Maybe a next step, Mr. Chairman, would be to convene a workshop with ETDD and T-Dot and let us express what we aspire to do, maybe as frontage roads, access and properties from the back, and then tell them what some of the constraints are. We don't want to, you know, spend ten years doing this and, you know, lots of money. And let them, you know, say what, you know, what we could accomplish through a corridor management plan.
Yeah, we, we already had a number of pedestrian discussions with T-Dot already. Each time we have our P.O. meetings, they're there. We've spoken about it. And we've really spoken about it with Becky in attendance, because Becky came to one of our P.O. meetings, and we had that short conversation with the attorney who works for T-Dot.
So, maybe an appropriate action might be that the planning commission make a motion or a resolution that we have hold a workshop with T-Dot and ETDD to discuss what we would get out of the corridor management plan.
And how much we can expect to spend?
And how much will, how long will it take? And how much will it cost?
And is, is the value there? Does the, what is it? Is the juice worth the squeeze?
Is the juice worth the squeeze? That's a great question.
So, did you make that in the form of a motion? Chairman?
No.
Mike, can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
And this is a simple one. But if you read this, it says H-S-A-M volume one. Is there a volume two, volume three, or is that it?
I will, I'll, I got that from T-Dot. This is what they gave me. If there's a volume two, I'll make sure to find that.
Okay, thank you.
I took it this is the planning phase. They probably have an implementation, you know?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to make a motion here. I make a motion that the planning commission hold a workshop with T-Dot and ETDD to discuss the corridor management plan, and that be a joint workshop between the planning commission and board of commissioners.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Joey, you got the second. Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed in minutes. All right. So, I guess that takes care of our corridor, corridor management discussion. Moving on, old business. We don't have anything in our old business. Other business, we have the added agenda item, and Ed will copy of the digital planning
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and, and thanks, Commissioner Funk, for your patience as we've been working through this. I've had some additional discussions with ETDD. I've asked them for a digital copy of our, our zoning ordinance. And here's what I've come to, to understand, is that currently, as part of our consulting services with ETDD, they manage the master copy of the zoning ordinance, and that's what we contract with them to do. And the way they do that is by having an editable copy that when the planning commission will suggest changes to the zoning ordinance, and those are adopted by the city, then they are made in that editable copy and eventually, you know, posted online. And so, that's generally the model that we're working in now. But that's not the only model that cities utilize. So, there is another model where, and then city planner can clarify this, because I'm speaking about other cities. But the other model is where cities will maintain their own editable copy, and then they provide all the changes, or if they want input from the ETDD, then they'll give them a hard copy. And the ETDD will do that, and then they will give their advice back to the city. And then it's the city's responsibility to use their editable copy and make a version that is posted somehow online. Is that generally the two models?
And the bottom line is that we refuse ourselves of maintaining the integrity of the document. It's no longer something that is our responsibility whatsoever. So, it's the city that has to maintain it. The city that will, that will be responsible for its contents. The city will be the one to make physical changes to it, and we will be using it as a hard copy from the city. But we refuse ourselves absolutely legally, managerially, editorially, from the document because we could risk getting into legal problems and, and practice problems. So, we've been there before, and the only way we do is that you say from now on that we have nothing to do with the document other than giving us a hard copy.
So, there's two models, and we, we've been using one model to do this. What I've come to appreciate is not as simple. I thought, you know, every document I use in my work is an editable Word document. We send these things back and forth and track changes. Seems very simple to do. Well, it's, it's not quite as simple as getting a Word document and then working in this first model like we're currently working. What this will require is that if we want to have an editable copy that we can circulate among planning commissioner, commissioners to use in our work, we can do that. We just have to change our model from the first model where ET, we consult with ETDD to do that, to the second model. And some cities use this model. And so, what I, what ETDD has provided is what are the, what's the documents that will be necessary to move to the second model? And I think if we do this, before I sign off on any change to move to the second model, I'm going to have to take this to the board of commissioners and get their input on that. But before we do that, I would like to get the recommendation from the planning commission. So, our current model is to have the primary responsibility for the editable document with ETDD, and we provide them the changes, and they make the changes. And the second model is we maintain it, and we provide them a hard copy, and they will give us. And so, that's, that's what it will, will take. But what's not compatible is working in that first model and having us circulating around a copy. And so, I would like to get the input of the planning commission on, do you want to move to the second model? And the other, and the second question I would ask you to opine on is if we decide to move to the second model, who is going to be responsible for the editable document and making the changes? So, ETDD will give us their input. We'll vote on things. We'll make changes to the zoning ordinance. And so, some of the options that you could consider is we could have city staff do it. As you know, we're sort of tight on city staff at the moment. We could hire somebody else to do it on a consulting basis. Or we could take it as a responsibility of the planning commission or, you know, some other entity that we have. So, there's different ways. So, somebody's got to be in charge of the document and making the revisions and things like that if we move to the second model. So, I would like to get some input from planning commission. I'll share with you what it looks like in terms of the documents we've got assigned. And if we can get a recommendation from the planning commission, do you want to stay with the current model, or do you want to move to the second model? I'm happy to take that up at the board of commissioners.
Mayor, this, hold it down my mind real quick. They're only, if we accept the second model, they, they just are washed from the intellectual property, and we are then responsible for everything and giving them a hard copy.
They will, in order to get their advice, we will give them a hard copy. They will give us the feedback on their advice.
Whatever we do, if we have a mission being responsible, something like that, this board can be, as we've seen in the last year or two, change a little bit. So, we need to be moving stable, either hired up, because I don't know, we got the city staff do it or not.
Well, right now, we're sort of down on city staff. We had one person that's basically doing recording, court clerk, city manager, and that person has indicated to us that they plan to depart here at the end of this week. and that person has indicated to us that they plan to depart here at the end of this week. And so if we're going to ask city staff to do it, we're going to have to hire somebody. Now, I'll tell you that from the perspective of Board of Commissioners, that we are in the latter stages of the recruitment for the city manager position. And then we do plan in our model to backfill and hire a city recorder. This would be additional duties beyond what the city recorder has been asked to do before. So I don't know if we would take a look at what those responsibilities might be if it's city staff. So it's either hire somebody else or do less of something else probably in either the city manager or the city recorder or come up with some other model.
We've had a city manager and recorder prior to the past year. Gala has carried a very heavy load. So I would hope, and I don't know what your plans are, but I would hope that you would have a city manager and recorder today, I mean not today, in the future. So I don't see why the recorder or city manager could not be responsible for this. But let me go back. What we have right now, who is responsible for keeping it up to date?
The ultimate changes that are approved, so if we took a motion tonight and changed something in the zoning ordinance, we will give a hard copy or something to ETDD and they would edit the master copy and then periodically they will update the copy that's online. I think there's a disclaimer in the online copy. But basically, they are in charge of making the changes.
And we pay them to do that.
Yes, we do.
So we'd be saving money if we get back to our two employees. We know that one person has done it for the past year. So if we go back to two employees, there should be enough time for one of those employees to handle this plus save money on our line budget with East Tennessee Development. That's one reason. Another reason, East Tennessee Development has not done a good job keeping this up at all. There are so many conflicting spaces. This is why I, so bottom line, who's going to give us a straightened out? We don't even have a straightened out copy to even start with. They have been responsible for this. Are they responsible for straightening this mess out before they hand it over? Or it will be our responsibility to straighten this mess out after they give it to us? Who's giving it? For instance, just today, reviewing this, it says, blah, blah, ordinance number 131-03-1C. Not in our book. Ordinance 147-04-1C, not in our book. We have passed three ordinances that are not in our book. And I'm thinking about the workshop tomorrow. How can we have a workshop when we don't even have all the rules? So they have done less than a stellar job. So where are we starting from? Are they going to correct everything and send it to us? Are we going to fix their mistakes? And how do we even fix their mistakes? It is going to be historical endeavor.
Yeah, well, let me add a few more to your point. So we do have to submit amendments and changes and they do need to get integrated timely so that we have an accurate book and so that we publish the most reasonably accurate copy. In addition to that, I've been made aware that we have additional challenges. One of the challenges that we have is the copy that we are using is a very old version of Microsoft Word. It is so old that the formats no longer are compatible with new versions.
Are we using that or is East Tennessee?
And so this is the version that...
Let me, first, I would like to ask Tim to give a little explanation of the challenges that we have that exist with changing the document to add the amendments. All the amendments are here. We didn't attempt to update them the last night. If you could give a little bit of brief discussion of what challenges we faced and then I can then tell you what the solution will have to be.
Okay.
I know Akim tried to update some through his computer and number one, it wouldn't accept what he was putting in. The formatting would change when he would try to put it in completely.
But whose responsibility is, are we using the wrong Word version or are they using the wrong? Whose responsibility?
Let me explain how it will answer what she's hoping to answer. A couple of days ago, I went to meet with Danres. Danres has the same issue with their documents, old, archaic, formatted software. So they've asked us to go through their documents and basically tell them how they need to revise old language, disused terms, whatever else. Now, when we give them that input, we're going to give it to them in the form of a document that suggests this item changed this way, this one changed that way. But then they are now going through and hiring a graphic designer to actually reformat the entire document, which is something that all cities should have been doing all along. Okay?
But we have been paying East Tennessee Development to do this.
You have not been paying us to, you've not been paying us to graphic design.
I'm not asking. I'm talking about words.
But that's what you're implying.
No.
You don't seem to understand what you're actually saying. What you're actually saying is that you are asking us to format your document for you and keep it up with the times technologically and in terms of software technology. And we are saying that if you want to do that, we advise that it be done as Danres has approached us to do. So what we have been able to do, we've been able to make those changes but inordinate difficulty in terms of the archaicness of the software, the WordPress program. So we have been keeping track of the changes that need to be put in there. We tried to put the changes in there. It was an issue. So Danres, for example, they actually gave them information. They're going to completely do a complete new ordinance and a complete new subdivision reg and vote it in from front page to back page.
Okay, let me just join to your point, which is a good one. We have additional problems and we have a problem with the version of the software that we use is we're working in an old outdated version that is so, it's gotten to the point where it's been increasingly challenging to even put our amendments in. So I don't know exactly. We can go back and look at the contract with ETDD and see if we actually contracted with them to keep our software up to date.
No, not the software. If you're responsible to keep the text, that has nothing to do with software.
Yeah, and we have kept, we have been keeping up on the text through having a copy. We know what the changes are.
But you know, isn't in our book.
Okay, just a couple more points here. One of the other things that I've asked about since I came on the Planning Commission is what happens to these site plans? Once we approve a site plan, somebody's going to go off and get a building permit and build it and maybe 10 years from now, we'll have a question about that site plan. Currently, our system is to store paper. We are not digitizing any of our records. As a result, we've got paper all over the place. We still got paper, I think, up in the old building. We've got paper here. Nothing has been digitized. We actually asked a former city manager to look into this about digitizing and I'm not sure that we've got very far on this project with digitizing our records. And so the problems that I see are we need to have sort of a modern formatting for the zoning ordinance, for the subdivision regulations, something that will facilitate our being able to change it. We need to be digitizing our records and we need to come up with a model where we can be efficient and effective in our work and that's what you've been encouraging us to do. And so if we want to move to the second model, then that's a decision by the Board of Commissioners to say, do city staff have adequate time to do this? And so we would have to add this to the duties of city staff. Yes, we would probably pull it out of the contract with ETDD. That's what these documents would potentially facilitate. But we have to figure out how we're going to resource that. And right now, we've got a number of duties and functions in the city manager position. Some things that have been in that position that we think are very important that have never really been acted on, like looking into grants and doing those types of things, very important. We've got the city recorder position, which not only does the city record, this court clerk does media, does everything else. And so this would be adding another function to the city recorder. Or it could be hiring a part-time person. So it could be two plus a half-time person. But these are not decisions that the Planning Commission will make, although the Planning Commission can recommend. If you want to move from a model where you contracted ETDD to maintain it, then you can recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they consider moving to the other model. And you can say, we think the city recorder ought to, or city staff, I would just say, city staff ought to be supporting this. And then it's up to the Board of Commissioners to say, okay, well, we're not going to do something. We need to look at the functions and make sure that we have adequate city staff to be able to support this.
Okay, you had made a statement of if we decide to move forward with ETDD, we would look at a contract. Don't we already have a contract? My point is, my question is, don't we already have a contract? Aren't they already being paid? And why isn't this book updated? And then my second question is, before we move to this new world, how do we start with the mess that we already have? Who is going to straighten this out? I have been volunteering, offering, give it to me. All I want to do is put notes out to the side, give it to the commissioners, say, what's right? This says this, that says that. But I have been shot down for nine months now and I just wanted to help. So who is going to get this book in order, in order to move forward? Because it is a mess. So we've contracted with East Tennessee Development to do it and it's not done. So where are we?
Let me try something out. The issue with your documents is dealing with software technology, not with the content in and of itself. So I'm saying that as Danres has decided to revamp the entire document, they're going to hire a graphic designer. They already have a webmaster. And after they've done everything that we recommend that they do, they will hand it over to a graphic designer and the graphic designer will import it to the webmaster. And now all your documents will be on the web. So what I'm saying is that the issue is not the content. We have the content. We have a grasp of the content. The question is the technology, the software technology as it exists now, that needs to improve. So if you want to take it over, we are willing to give it to you. You can sign the documents and then I would suggest that you hire somebody with graphic design skills and then maybe migrate everything that you want done and put it online electronically like Danres is doing.
Okay. And if we decide to stay in the first model where ETDD is doing this?
Yes.
Would you, can you do it within the current scope of our existing consulting contract? Or do you need additional resources to do it?
I would have to check and break, but I think it would be an additional service because one of the things that I'm pushing in there for us to do with our organization is that we are looking to hire some graphic design interns from the city to help us with some of our...
Okay. Maybe we just take it over and do it ourselves or we could contract with ETDD to update the formatting, get modern software?
Yes. But if we hand it over to you, then we refuse ourselves from that document.
I understand the two models.
Did I say here that really you should be looking into a codification service more than a graphic designer? There's like this group, a certain service that can do it, probably a better job than graphic designers.
Yeah, with somebody, whatever the right term. I think you're right, Chris.
But back to my original question, where do we start? This is not correct.
Okay, here's what I would ask, is that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Say, here's where the problems are and here's how, you've done a good job, Joanna.
I offered.
Okay.
You do it without the documents.
Let's make a list and let, send it to the Board of Commissioners and say, here's how we recommend you fix it.
Okay, just answer this question. Who is responsible for this mess right here? Who has been responsible? Us or them?
Let me...
I don't know that it's about assigning blame.
We haven't had access to the document, so we are not responsible for this mess.
Well, we can look at our consulting contract, if you want to suggest to the Board of Commissioners that we do an audit of our consulting contract to see if somebody has fallen down on the job. That would be an option.
That would be great.
But, well, okay, if that's your recommendation, that takes time and...
I want to know how did we do it?
Okay, hold on. Is Chairman, I'm going to take control of this meeting again. I've sat here long enough watching people go back and forth and asking the same question.
I asked the same question.
I'm going to move that we recommend to the city council that they hire a third party to look at the formatting of this old document and hire a group, either ETDD or a third party, to go in and get us a digital copy of our planning zoning regulations, which is up to date, which is usable, which is importable, editable, you can edit the thing. And just to bring it back, I don't have any problem at all with ETDD being the warehouse where it's stored. I understand that this is an old clunker of a document that's been kicked around like an old car and they've just been having it sitting there in their garage. They were not asked to work on it and fix it up. So we need to get somebody to fix it up. So I am making a motion that we recommend to the council that they find a group, either ETDD or a third party, that can update this to a modern digital version.
Yes, just understand that the moment we release, the only way we can release you the soft copy is if you sign those documents. That, you are refusing us from it and we no longer...
Mike, you need to have a second and a blow before you can have additional discussion, including him.
I'll second it. If it's ETDD that does it, then it can stay in house. If it needs to come out of house, then the council, he's not there. So a motion and a second.
I just have a question. I have a question. So whoever is going to be doing this, are they going to take what we have and just basically retype it in a new format and a new software? Nothing will be changed?
Well, a lot of things will change. The specifications will change, but the technology to defend those specifications will change. So for example, all the graphics in there will have already written out.
Will the words change?
No.
That's what I want to hear.
The only words that will change are amendments.
Would you go in and change the wording?
Because it's already been done. I have found changes.
No, that's not true. That's not true.
I've seen no evidence of that either.
Have you looked page for page through it?
I'd like to see the first apple and the second apple that you're looking at. Because I just have one apple.
Because basically they're refusing us of changing things. I don't want to change it. And whatever has been changed has been for amendments.
Akim, I met our very first blow up after I said, I said, everything in red is what has changed, correct? You said, correct. And I said, well, these have changed and they're not in red. And you said, don't look at that. That's what kicked this all off.
Let me explain something. Whichever versions you've seen, I do not know what you've seen.
I don't know what Gala gave me.
All I'm saying is that the version that we have, we've kept it under tight protocol and security. The moment you want it, we have no problems giving it to you. Just sign the documents. You can have it. You deal with it as you see fit.
So it will be, the words will not change? And my criticism, words will not change. It will match what is online, what Gala gave me in January. Whatever is retyped, it will match. That's my concern. I just want to make sure things have not been changed without tying to an ordinance. Yes, things will change when they're tied to an ordinance. But when things go in and are changed that are not tied to an ordinance, I want to make sure the words will be the same. Graphics don't care.
And I'm saying that whatever copy you have... And I'm saying that whatever copy you have...
Is what Gala gave me.
Exactly. But that's not the copy or it could be the copy that we have. So what I'm saying is that what we have is what is. Whatever you have out there in either, it's not what the document is. The document is what we have. The moment you want that document in the soft copy, we'll gladly give it to you. And then you can determine what you want to do with the document. There what you have and what we give.
So you're telling me that Gala could have given me a wrong?
I don't know. I'm saying that, what I'm saying is that I have no idea what document you're talking about. I have no idea. All I know is the document that we have.
Okay, you guys aren't going to settle this right now.
Not at all.
Just let it go, let Mike make his motion in a second and let's move on.
Yes, with our motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, the eyes have it, the recommendation passed.
You want to do a roll call just to make sure?
Oh, I abstained. I'm not ready. You had all, all the other eyes abstained because I'm not certain.
You abstained? I said, no.
Okay, we do need to do a roll call.
Well, we just, you said in the microphone. So the recommendation is for the Planning Commission to recommend to the city council that they hire either ETDD or a third party to update our document into a usable digital format we have.
That matches what we have.
All right, what other business do we have? Anything else on the agenda needs to be addressed?
The only, the only other thing is that I have CPAC. I have submitted the, I've edited, I've submitted the historic preservation content. And we're going to have easy to nation.
Any other business?
So when will we have a good, a working copy?
We, they haven't even acted on it as another city council.
So when we have a workshop tomorrow?
It will not be at the workshop tomorrow. Okay, do we have any other business other than this digital copy that we talked about? No.
What is the workshop tomorrow?
Workshop tomorrow is residences in game one and driveway, uh, minute. Click the... Oh yeah, and then the housing, the housing declaration program that Doug brought to us, the residential, tourist residential decoration format. Is it lasting?
It's in the minutes from our last meeting. Two o'clock, two o'clock tomorrow here.
And the list of things that we're going to go over center as well in minutes? Because if we're going to prepare, we need to know what we're going to be talking about.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the minutes that we just approved.
Okay, I move that we adjourn the meeting being eight thirty-seven. About six. Okay, a motion is taken to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Where's your...